Okay, no we do. The Northwoodby Park and Recreation District Regular Meeting is called to order on Thursday, August 25th at 6:32 PM. One housekeeping item, the note taker for tonight will be Commissioner Hoffmeyer. It's your turn in the barrel. Second note on that, I will take the minutes the next meeting, even though I'm acting as chairman, I don't find the duties as chairman so onerous that I can't keep minutes, so I will take the minutes for the next meeting. And we do have to elect a new chairman, and we will do that at the meeting in early September, because we will have everybody here, after we elect the fifth, or select the fifth member. So, agenda changes. One unfinished business I want to add, I want to talk about media policy again, and I think that was all I had to add. Commissioner Ford, do you have any agenda changes?
Well, I don't know if the agenda change, or the swim coach travel reimbursement, you guys, you guys are talking about, previous board-
Uh huh.
-had voted to establish a limit on the-
Yes.
And if we, if we couldn't meet that limit, then when would stop travel reimbursement?
Yes, and I, I noticed that, and, you know, we'll talk about it tonight, and so, I won't add that, but, um, the director and I just talked about that, and, but we'll, we'll talk about it and explain it, and, and then-
Okay.
-we're having the budget meeting in a couple of weeks, so-
Alright.
And when Coach's Travel Fund.
Right.
Okay, was that it?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer.
I'm, I'm-
Okay, public comments. Do we have any public comments signed up?
Did you sign? Okay, then let me grab that.
Go ahead.
Yes, speak loudly, please.
I assume you're the only one on the list?
He is. Okay, uh, Michael Frasch, um, just want to bring out a few things going on with the Clover Valley, uh, Blue River Park. We finished up the red strain around the water hole area, and the pools out there, and that's actually working pretty good. Um, well, I noticed yesterday, and actually I've seen noticing it more often, is a lot of cigarette butts are being thrown in the dark park, and that's very poisonous to the dogs, even though we have signs all, all the way, everywhere in that park saying, "Throw, throw your cigarette butts away." Uh, yet however, because of the fire, the fireman that we're in right now, actually saw a little fire off to the side, uh, other side of the parking space, on where the, the base owns that pool right there, there's a little smoldering going on in there, and now we turned out, I just was hopefully wondering if we could kind of get the fire department every once in a while to come over there, make sure that something's not going on over there, because I mean, we'll, we'll catch it when we get there, but I'm afraid that it's gonna happen when somebody's not there, so.
You would think it was being thrown in the dog park, it would be a dog, person who is smoking.
But I've also seen a lot of people go over there just to park over there, or go to the baseball field if it's open in that area. I've actually seen a lot of people there just stop over there and just park, and just be there for whatever reason that they are like tapping on their phone, or-
Oh, so it's more in a parking area, not out in the dog park area?
Yeah, it's more in the parking area, that was where we find the, the smolder go there, but inside the parking, uh, inside the park itself, around the benches, we're seeing a lot of cigarette butts, and every time I go there, I think I'm picking up like four or five cigarette butts every single day I get there, and I, I would like to see if we could get somebody, like the police can come over there in the morning timeframe, because I know it's, it's gotta be the people that go in there in the mornings, because I know it's not any of us that are there in the evening time, so. But my, like I said, my biggest concern is that fire that we saw, the smoldering that we saw yesterday, so, we quickly put it out, because we could smell it, but we couldn't see anything, and then we saw a little bit of smoke and we put it out.
Did you see a cigarette butt?
Uh, I did not personally, I did not see it, because somebody was helping me out, grabbed the rake, and they kind of like shuffled it around, tried to put it in there, we just doused it with water, so made sure it was put out.
I wonder if there's not a chance of one of those fire suppressant ashtrays as a sign, whether people would use it or not?
I think if they're not throwing their, because there's, there are the recept, trash receptacles, although that might set those on fire-
Yes.
-but if they're not using those, they're not getting used the others.
I don't smoke, but it seems pretty easy to put the thing out.
As we do, and we know that it's nasty for people to just flick their bick, their butts anywhere, but, you know. Where exactly was this, the fire?
It was, uh, by the, the parking area-
Right, in front of the dog park?
In front of the dog park, it was on the other side of the road, where-
Oh, so across the road?
Across the road, meaning where the bases, the bases, uh, saying that they own that.
And they do, but we don't, we don't want their fire to spread to our area, that would not be a good thing, okay. We will at least report that to the fire department on base, and, um, so that maybe they, they know to take a look every once in a while.
Because I know it's getting really, really dry out there, and the grass, well, the weeds, I should say, are even brown now, so I just, uh, I, I just want to make sure that we don't get a fire, so we can't use that anymore.
So, heavens, I know a guy that's a firefighter on base, knows a little bit about the dog park.
Will you tell him then?
Yeah, I will, I'll call him tomorrow.
Okay, so, action added to Director Kaz to call the fire department.
Got it.
And, we are not supposed to be doing a back and forth with the audience, but since it's just you, it's okay, but no, this is important, and we need to do some, and, um, if you think of something that might help with the cigarette butts, because I honestly, other than, and I know people go down there and park, that's always been an issue, and I don't, and there was talk about them doing drugs and stuff, or-
They do.
And, I, you know, maybe we need to tell, the sheriff doesn't have enough people, I wonder if the base police would, because part of that is their property too.
Well, that can be part of my discussion with Sean-
Oh, okay, oh, that's right.
-to me up with, um, whoever the base security is, because if that's their, if that's their piece of property, which it is, then, um, like I said, we're glad to help out and keep monitoring it, because we're there all the time, but it would, if they could step up a little bit of, maybe they do, and we just don't see it, but, my guess is they probably don't even go over there much, if at all.
I'm sure they don't, but it's like, so, if you think of anything else we can do-
Now, I know there's like a fine in the city for like littering, can we get signs under that specifically mentioned, if you throw your cigarette butts away, we get, uh, you could get a fine, a thousand dollars or something like that?
Yeah, yes we can, those are being worked right now. Okay. For, it's, it's, it's generally, you know, littering is-
Because the people dump cigarette butts, almost as bad as dumping a big, um-
And I've got the-
-overstuffed sofa, but not, it's easier to take care of, but-
And that's a county, actually, so, but I have the county codes.
And those of you who are sitting there, if you see somebody flicking a bic, or a lit cigarette, take, take photos, and-
Oh, no, we pretty much stare at these people that smoke, and everybody that does smoke, they either put it out in their pocket and throw it in the trash when they put it out-
Okay.
-or they take it with them.
Okay.
And it's gotta be the people that are going in there in the morning, or the, the very late evening, but I'm pretty sure it's the morning people, because I don't think people get in there at night just to smoke, so-
Yeah, you're probably right.
They, they might go there and do drugs, but that's something different right there, so.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't really see any of that right there, so I just see a lot of cigarette butts.
Okay, so, when, because we talked about having these signs, when are they, when are they gonna be done, or are we waiting for the school, is it, we're gonna ask the school to do it, what, what's going on?
No, the, um, when we change, we were gonna put it all, whenever we changed out the one cable wire to the cattle gate, which we just finally got the, and that's, we just finally got approval for that account with Tractor Supply, because they were the ones that had the cheapest, the lowest cost ability to get a gate, so-
Okay.
After we do the pool stuff here in this next week, then I'll have Matt work that one.
Okay.
I could possibly get my command to make a temporary sign, because they made a couple of signs for us before for the park, like all those that we stuck on the fence, say, "Hey, clean up after your dog, use the rules," and stuff like that, so, I mean, they get the, we got the ability to make some classic signs temporary before that.
Okay, um, then let, I, can you get with me, I'll get what the codes are, because I've got them in here from when I talked to the county sheriff, um, and we'll make sure that we get from commissioners, a letter of appreciation for the donation of the, of the signs, so, we'll make, we'll make them get that, that may grade as a temporary stopgap, yes.
I just need the garbage, and once I get the garbage, I will go and make that.
If, if we have time, we'll circle on that, if you're here the whole time, if you're not, then we'll, we'll circle back tomorrow.
Okay, so I'll probably get with you back tomorrow, because I actually have to be out of here by seven.
You don't, you don't have any chance to know who's in charge of the MPs out there, is it Pat, is it Master Chief McCullough, or?
The what again?
The MPs, who's in charge of the police out there?
I can find out, because one of my coworkers is actually, one of the spouses, a security-
Awesome.
-so I can probably find out who the watch commander is, and who the, the master chief over there is, so.
Awesome. Cool, thank you.
Okay, is that all your comments?
That, that's all I have.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, board issues. Commissioner Ford?
Uh, I think I already brought the, as the agenda changed, maybe that was a board issue, the, about the coaches' travel.
Right, and we're gonna talk about that?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have nothing to add.
Okay, did I mention we have to elect a new chairman?
You did.
Okay.
Next.
Sorry. It's been a big day, okay. Um, so, prue laments, we do not have the April 28th minutes, correct? I don't, I saw, I saw May, have we already done them? Because I was real surprised I didn't have them, but-
Oh, we don't have them, but they are on the, they are on the list, I mean, they are on the webpage.
I know, but I, we did not, we did not get them, I, I think, so we have, what I have was May, Junes, and July.
Here's April 28th, right here.
I thought I sent them in the email.
No, no.
No, the back page is up front.
Oh.
Ah, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, I thought she'd gotten all into it.
Is that April 28th?
Okay, so we do have it. So, um, do I have a motion for the minutes of April 28th?
Make a motion, we have, uh, accept the minutes of April 28th, 2016, as written.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Any discussion? It's been moved and seconded that the minutes for 28 April will be approved as written. How say you?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Do I have a motion on the minutes of May 19th?
Yes, I motion that we approve the minutes on May 19th.
Second.
It's, okay, discussion. It's been moved and seconded that the minutes of May 19th, 2016, regular meeting will be approved as written. How say you?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Do I have a motion on the minutes of June 23rd, regular meeting?
Um, yeah, I recommend we make a motion that we, uh, approve the June 23rd, 2016 minutes as written.
Second.
Discussion. It's been moved and seconded that the June 23rd, 2016, regular meeting minutes be approved as written. How say you?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Do I have a motion on the July 28th, 2016, regular meeting minutes?
Motion that we approve the minutes of July 18th, 2016.
Can I second my own?
Yes, you can.
I'll second it.
Can I, can we get him to rephrase that to July 28th?
Oh, sorry.
Oh.
I say the 18th? Yeah, July 28th, 2016, regular meeting.
Okay.
Second.
All right, discussion. Kudos to Commander, or, sorry, is it Commander Ford, um, CR, Commissioner Ford, for getting this done so quickly. Um, in the public comments section, you, you specified Mr. Frasch's name, and I know that when I put somebody's name in the public comments, I got vilified, and there was a, if you, there was a, a decision was made back in 2013, that we would, we would not put people's names in it, and this doesn't, it just says his comments on dog park, I find nothing wrong with that, but, it, and that's kind of sometimes what I did, but it was still apparently, you know, they just said, if you just put available on YouTube, I think is what, um, the, in 2013, they wanted us to do.
Except the name is not clear on YouTube, it's not spelled out on YouTube.
Yes, and you are preaching to the choir, it was just, it was a decision-
Does anybody else here have objections to the name? I mean, that was a different board.
I know that, and it was, it was, just, you are correct, and it was, um, and just if you put a generic comment on the dog park, I absolut, I don't know why anyone has a problem with that, but, um, tell you what, how about if we put this for discussion at the next time we have a full five-member board, and we will decide this board's policy on public comments, okay? For, so for now, we're gonna leave this alone the way that it is.
We'll leave that one the way it is, and then on tonight, I'll just put comments on the dog park for now, and-
Yes.
Go away.
Okay. Oh, I had a question on the second page, surplus of vehicles, kayaks, and question mark office trailer, what was the question, was that a typo, or was it a question mark?
Well, I mean, no, we were, it wasn't sure whether we were gonna get rid of the office trailer or not.
Oh, okay.
Depend upon price, it depend upon-
If we, maybe we just put possibly instead of a question mark then?
Okay.
Okay. Okay, anyone else have any comments on this? It's been moved and seconded, oh, so, um, do you accept that change possibly, or not? If you can leave the question mark, okay.
Yeah.
It's been moved and seconded that the July 28th, 2016, regular meeting minutes will be approved as written with the one change of putting possibly in place of the question mark. How say you?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimously approved. Next item, voucher review. Do I have a motion on the expense vouchers? So, you, this voucher to this voucher, and this amount, and payroll transfers from this-
Okay, I make a motion that we, um-
Approve.
-approve the district vouchers 7230 through 7265, in the amount of $30,567.54, and the payroll transfers from the MNO account, to payroll account of $48,295.1.
Second.
Discussion. I noticed that we got, we, we had finance charges on all of our credit cards, but then somebody had deleted them and gone down to a lesser amount, so did we contest those charges?
Yeah, did we contest all of them, because it's the way county does, but you'll see, you'll see, in the Treasurers Report, you'll see it, but I'll explain it here, um, we had that one where the wrong amount was sent to Visa Company.
Uh huh.
The error started here, not caught by county, which they normally would catch that, it went Visa-
Oh, I did see that, yeah.
Visa went into tremors, because they wouldn't, they, oh, it doesn't, they don't add up, so they sent it back-
Oh.
-which then incurred the charge, and so we're trying to contest the charge, because they should have just taken what they had-
Yeah.
-and applied it, and then hit us with something, but it didn't compute to them, probably because it was a government island county check, so, um, it's been resubmitted, and that's what you'll also see in the Treasurers Report.
Okay.
You'll see it in both columns. Yes?
Barracuda backup renewed? What is barracuda?
That's our online backup for all of our files that we have on our server.
That's an annual renewal?
Yes, plus tax. The lifeguards.
The lifeguards, yes. Okay. And is that, I, I fully think that's awesome, I'm glad we provided it, I know that they have to like pay for lifeguard training, they don't pay for this training, correct?
Um, let me find that again, which one was that on?
The, um, Julie's.
Julie, that's the first one. Let me find that out. It's on the back page?
Yeah, it's the, um, LGS Bloodborne Pathogen Training, $140.
Those are course materials, I'll verify that for you, but those are course materials, and there was a lifeguard course, but let me make sure that that's, I, I think that was part of the lifeguard course.
Oh, okay.
But let me verify that.
Because I know they, they, they pay for that stuff, so, anyway. Now, and then, ARC Services Training, this is in Erica's, babysitting class, $54.
Oh, okay.
Do, do they, was that, again, course materials?
Course materials.
Do then, do the trainees pay, I know they do with the lifeguard training, do they do with the base?
Yes, yes, yeah, the, the cost of the course covers the cost of the materials and the instructor.
Okay. So, and I did wonder, I saw all the ARC training, which is like, I'm glad we got it all done while Erica was still here-
Yep.
-but it's like, and, I couldn't find that all on the P and L, but now you're telling me the P and L couldn't be updated until we do something with the budget, I think you said?
I can't make changes to the P, to the budget until we do the budget revision, but-
Oh, okay, okay, now I understand.
So I can't change any of the budgeted, the, the actuals are actuals, they're, they're the actuals, but I can't change any of the budget amounts unless you all approve them.
Okay, I, I just didn't see Red Cross Training, but maybe it's all, it's all called lifeguard training or something?
Yeah, I think it might be.
Okay.
I, I had one, one question here too. Baron Heating, burner control and pressure relief valve, is that, that's in regards to the incident that happened in the boiler room?
Well, there were two, if you're talking about the one where Matt got hurt?
Yeah.
No, that, that was the, um, the pump.
And I just wondered if the, that PRV, if something was wrong with that, and that's what caused that, that's the only reason I was inquiring?
No, that was fixed prior to that.
Oh, wow.
It was whenever the circulating pump quit working, subsequent to that, is whenever the, so this was, this was before the incident with Matt.
Might, it might be a very good thing that it was fixed first, then possibly, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome, cool. That was the only question I had, they kind of spend it, but that type of stuff is, and I've worked with Baron, and they seem pretty affordable.
Yeah, they're, they're good.
Yeah.
And smiley face to the director for putting a thousand dollars back in the reserves, reserves I noted, now up to over $73,000. Woo-hoo, good job. How, how much do we need to put back in to recoup the money that we spent in the past two Januaries?
Past two, you mean?
Yeah, we, we had some money that we took out two Januaries ago, and we said we'd put it all back in, but we didn't get it all put back in last year, because we knew we were going to, and then there was the money you took out this January, so it's like-
Do whatever the budget overrun was, wouldn't it be?
Yeah, the one, the one that, um, the month, the bulk stuff that's been paid back was what I pulled out this year already to cover the payrolls, the two payrolls I had to cover.
Right.
Then that, then we had, there was the $13,000 that wasn't paid back from '15 yet-
Right.
-and then we projected the ability to be able to put 15 more thousand into it-
Yes.
-is what the 28 comes from. Um, I don't, I don't think I'm going to have a problem covering the 13, I don't know if I'm gonna get all the way up to 28, it's gonna depend on what things look like in the last quarter of the year.
Okay.
But, yeah, I don't think I'm gonna have a problem, nothing went in this month, because Joanne recommended we don't put anything in there this month, because we're, our numbers are coming down, I don't think, I, I think we're good to get to the November dump, when we get another C more, I think we're good to get to the November, uh, next distribution of the, of the levy money, but we're cautious, if not, the, the original plan was to take it out of there anyway, if you remember, uh, from back in like January, February, am I right?
Yes, no, and that's, you know, if you have a month where you know it's like you might not get the money, then don't do it, but it's good when you can.
We are trying, yes.
Awesome. Okay, I have, it's been moved and seconded, let me find the whole thing again, paper, okay, that district vouchers 7230 to 7265, in the amount of $30,567.54, and payroll transfers from MNO account to payroll account, to payroll account of $48,295.1, be approved. How say you?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous approval. Okay, next topic, committee reports, Clover Valley Committee.
Uh, I, I hadn't been contacted yet, we haven't had any meetings, um, but there was one scheduled for September, Billy, right?
Yeah, we're, after we get through the mid-year revision and stuff now, which I think is gonna potentially be on the 7th, in the following week, I'm gonna try and set one up, and I, I actually was gonna ask you if you thought it might be good just to meet out there-
Yeah, absolutely.
-and do it out there, and then I'll talk to Mike and Eric, uh, because they were the ones who were, who wanted to be on it, uh, and then I'll arrange a time with them. And what time is better for you, Commissioner Hoffmeyer?
Uh, if it's on a weekday after, after 5:30, probably.
So, 5:45-ish?
Yes.
Good?
Yeah.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, program review committee did not meet this month, we are bad. Levy Committee met, and I, I think we mentioned Teresa Reed is gonna be on the committee, the other lady that we were, um, that had expressed an interest, I, I haven't been able to get hold of her, I don't think she is interested now, um, and we are set for another meeting, you know, in September, the 15th of September, so, and the biggest thing that we found out is that what we really need is to have a separate, completely separate committee that will deal with raising money to influence the election, because we in the district are forbidden from doing so by law, and it's like, who knew? I didn't, until I read the paper, it's like, oh, shoot, okay, so, we won't do that, and, um, the director is forbidden, I'm forbidden, and it's like, we can, we can go work for it, but we, you have to be very, very careful of how you, how you do it.
Yes, we, we probably oughta start thinking about who we want to, to write our paragraph or two in the voter pamphlet as well, because there will be an opposing paragraph from somebody, that's, that's how the whole thing goes, and something, to, to have a statement, to have a statement in the voter pamphlet in favor of, it may be on us to find somebody to write one against it as well, because they're not, they're not-
We should write it.
That's really smart.
So, we may have to find our own-
Here, here, we'll write both.
We might not have to find our own anti as well.
Do you think that, um, are we for, are we allowed to actually write the in favor paragraph, or do we have, does that-
I don't know.
I'm gonna go read the, I'm gonna read the, the, the law again, and see if I think that that, can we actually do that part of it? We just, we're-
I'm not sure with the taxing district, yeah, I'm not sure, it's interesting.
Because it basically says, um, I'm trying to think of the word, administrators and, and representatives, or whatever, so it's like, if you're running for an office, you can't, you obviously want yourself to get elected-
Exactly.
-but if it's a district levy-
Yeah, I don't know.
-he absolutely can't, can't be involved in that, because he, he has to be, who's that guy that's, you know, I'm Switzerland, you're Switzerland, the rest of us, you know, it's like, I, I think we, the commissioners, also have to be Switzerland-
Yep.
-because we're just administering the will of the people, we're not supposed to influence the will of the people, which is like, ooh, okay, so, anyway, it does, and it's totally, you know, I get it, so, anyway, we, and we can't, we absolutely can't use any district, um, if we made this room available to somebody for pro purposes, we have to make equal time available for con purposes, and we absolutely, we talked about, and we said, that is not a problem, because I don't believe any con people want to use the pool, so.
I, I do know the one thing that, that is within our power to do, um, the city does it once a year, where they sit down and figure out what their legislative priorities are, and send them off to Olympia, you know, I think, us as a board could probably jump on board with a thousand other people and tell our congressmen and senators here that that we don't think the sixty percent threshold is very fair. And I, I know there's, there, there's some movement, that's something we could do.
Oh no, I don't want to go off that, I personally don't want to go up that sixty percent, because as soon as we do, we're going to get an income tax.
That's true.
Look at where it was last time, it was like at fifty-six percent and it's just inching that way up. So, no, let's stay at sixty percent, because we do manage to get a levy.
We have, yes.
So, and I think we will, I think when the people know it's for the pool, you know, most people think the pool is a good idea.
Anticortes gets seventy-plus cent percent.
That's amazing.
To, to pass a vote?
For the pool levy, yeah.
That's what they've been getting, that's what they're going to pass.
Oh, oh, they're, they're getting that much, that's not the threshold.
No, they've been getting that much or more.
Yeah.
Plus seventy-two.
Amazing.
We will go talk to Marilyn and of course, and find out what they do, maybe they're doing something special, they, you know, hand out special brownies.
Well, I don't think, I don't think they went through what this pool's gone through.
Well, there's that.
And then, just because the way their building's built, you know, they, they have all the yoga rooms and they have the weight room and that probably helps, you're bringing in more people, I suppose.
It does, and it, it's not just.
But they got there somehow, right?
They did, and we're, we're ten years behind them.
Yeah.
Okay, two decades, but we'll get there, okay. So that's, um, that's the levy committee, so we're, we're plunking along, we're trying to find, um, and other people to work toward, cause you have to, they have to raise some money so they can go out and, you know, we have some signs, so that's what we're working on. All right, action item review. I went through the last, the minutes that I had and looked at what action items there were, hang on. Okay, that one's done. Mr. McCaslin, did you get us the information on the donated parcel of land and link to the tax record?
He did it on the.
I believe I did shoot the.
Okay, I just.
A hyperlink, yeah, I showed a hyperlink to it.
Okay, I, I couldn't remember and I was too lazy to look it up, so I will, okay.
If you don't find it, I'll reconsider.
Okay, I will, I will come back and tell you if I can find it. And did we talk about the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act of two thousand nine, whether any of our kind of equipment is available on that?
That was, Commissioner Hoffmeyer was looking for like boilers and things like that, that we might be able to buy a surplus from other people. And we're, we're, I'll say passively doing it, we're not actively.
Okay.
Because right now there are other priorities, but that would be something that, uh, as we start looking in the next year's budget, we would definitely start going, uh, what if this happens, what do we need to look for? And see if potentially there's, uh, something out there, a piece of equipment out there that we could get for cheaper than, you know, Baron can get it for us.
Okay, so you have that in the back of your mind and you passed that to Matt?
Matt and I actively, we talk about it about every three weeks or so and when I have my, I have a weekly one-on-one with him, but we, it comes up on the agenda on a periodic basis.
Commissioner Hoffmeyer, do you consider that one done to your satisfaction for now?
Yes.
Very good recommendation. All right, in the, sorry.
Go ahead, I had coupled it.
Oh, um, you were going to look into the alternate sale process and contact CIAW?
Yeah, that's in the surplus update.
Okay. And... The free passes, who provides free passes? You were going to, we asked, where did the free passes come from?
There were five in June and there've been a couple of.
There were four for July, free passes.
Then I fell down on that one, I'm sorry, I didn't, uh, free passes to.
Where do they come from?
Who gets the free passes?
Who hands them out?
Free passes to the pool?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry I dropped that one, I don't remember it, um, I, but I'll find out, but I, off the top of my head, it would, I, I don't know, maybe an anonymous donor or maybe there's, uh, an organization out there, I mean.
Uh, it just says free passes and it was like.
Well, that wouldn't be a free pass, you know, that would be free pass to them, but somebody's paying for it.
Yeah.
Free pass implies that nobody's paying for it.
That's a, free pass I thought was something.
We don't give, we don't give free passes.
I didn't think.
Now, I, although I did find out, and I don't, and it sort of just went right by my head, there are, there are people who were involved in the standing up of this place thirty-something years ago that have free lifetime passes for some reason. And I don't, I just heard this the other day and it just sort of went, okay, um.
Okay, here's another action item, find out who they are and what that's about.
Yes.
Yeah, I think some of them have been on the boards at some point or another now that he said that, yeah.
You recall that?
I, I, I do, yeah, one family in particular, I think, lives down the street from my dad, and yeah, they helped build the place permits, I just said. But yeah, I don't, I don't know the specifics of it at all.
Uh, Julie will know that, so I'm going to look at, who gets free passes and then who, lifetime, who has lifetime passes?
I mean, if someone donated thousands of dollars at the beginning, I'm absolutely fine with that, but if it was just like.
I don't know.
As long as it's clean.
From a, from.
Yeah, can't gift.
Depending on what they got.
That's true.
What's that?
We can't gift and that's a problem.
That's true, you're right, you're right. So, we need to, so look into free passes, both those lifetime things you heard of and this whole, maybe what's being recorded here is free passes aren't really free passes, they are passes that are from some other organization who have paid for them, which case they need to be recorded, we need to, let's call them something, whatever they really are instead of free passes.
I'm sorry I dropped that, I didn't, I didn't remember that, so.
Okay, you got it written down now?
I do now.
Okay.
Now I can forget it after I wrote it down.
Okay, did I, anything else?
Yeah, one, I think, let's see, I think you addressed this last month about the email complaint from employee rudeness and you, you told, you emailed, said you'd get back to Shane and I, though I never received anything back, but I assumed.
No, I verbally, verbally last month I told you we'd close it, but I did not.
Until their satisfaction?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I forget her lady's name, but yes, she came in.
Okay.
We sat down and it was a learning, it, it provided a learning point for some of our younger staff as well, so.
Yeah, and this other one's probably belongs in the staff report, so I'll put it in there.
Okay, unfinished business, property surplus update.
Okay, so, last month we were talking about, well, we canceled the sale, or we, actually we temporarily suspended until we cancel the surplus sale we have, to look into what we think we could get for the bigger one. And, and the staff's position on it is, right now, that is valuable to us, however, we could make do with, you know, we could probably spend, I don't know, fifteen hundred, twelve to, twelve to two thousand, twelve hundred to two thousand dollars on a nice like Home Depot type shed, that, but it needs to be environmentally, uh, because that stores papers that, if it's left to the humidity and, and stuff like that, it's going to go, it's fine in there, it, because it's, it's there, I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, why don't we just keep it? Just take it off.
I'm okay, I, but I was, so I'm going to.
You had said originally that you were thinking about it.
Yeah.
So let's just say we're not thinking about it anymore.
Well, other than if we could get, you know, just find out what we could get for it.
That was probably what I was going to say. So I, I've done, I've done a search and it's not easy, that's an eight by twenty, uh, trailer. I've seen, I've seen like four, and it was not easy to find this, even, I mean, I did a pretty exhaustive search, probably spent about thirty minutes doing it. Four thousand to about five thousand five hundred is what I found, I could go buy one of those four right now. Like that, a used one, about ten years old for that. So, what we can get at an auction, I don't know.
Yeah.
But, uh, that's about, and that would be the upper end of, I think, what we would get if, if we got into that range. But if, if, if the, if the commission's okay with it, I would just as soon keep that for now. But no one down the road, we, there is a different option we could go if we decide we just need to get rid of that and.
Yeah, but that, that was the whole point, like my whole point was, let's, let's get rid of everything we need to get rid of at one time and not have this piecemeal that costs us advertising and stuff.
Yeah, I agree.
So, the follow-on to that was to find out other, I'm going to call it lower cost, but I'm also going to call it more streamlined methods, because there's still certain rules, you still have to declare it and all this stuff there. So, CIAW is helping me out, those guys were all part of school boards actually, over in, um, Moses Lake area.
Yeah, the other side of the mountains.
And so, um, they're looking into what they did, I'm surprised they haven't heard back from them yet, they probably got busy, I'll pump them, I'll pimp them on it. And I was, um, yesterday I was at a director's summit, sounds, sounds pretty fancy, but it's not really that fancy. But it's all of the, um, parks directors from, from Doug Coates down at South Whinby Park, Hank, the county, we had Steve Marks here from county, um, and me, but it also includes Skagit and Watford County as well. But they weren't at the one yesterday, they're, we're having a, a bigger meeting on, they, they do a quarterly thing, we're having a bigger one on September ninth. But here's what I found out about, and public surplus is going to be on the agenda of that meeting as well. City is having their next auction in spring. So, he doesn't have a specific date, that's Hank, he doesn't have a specific date yet, but I'll keep on that one and if, if, worst case, we can dump in with them. Doug Coates down in South Whinby has used a thing called public surplus. And it's a, it's an online, it's a company, I, he sent me today the contact info, so I have a call into the guy, just, you know, by the end of the day, he didn't get back to me, so that's all right. So I have a call in to them, go, okay, how does it work with you guys? And I specifically asked Doug if, okay, so there was, there's no, there were no legal issues, there are no anything, you can use these people. He goes, yeah, but then you have to declare the stuff surplus like the normal stuff there. So, my guess is these people take it, or they leave it here, they, they manage it, you send them pictures and they take a cut of the action or something like that. So it's really, I'm going to find out all those details and try, if I can, I'll try to have those at the next month's meeting.
Okay.
The next regular meeting.
Yeah, it sounds like a reasonable idea there, you know, they might have a marketing arm in place already, because they, if they're getting the commission, they want as much part as they can get.
Yeah.
That might be worth looking into.
So, I'll, I'll, I'll try and find that out for the next regular meeting.
Okay.
As we're heading into the non-prime kayaking time, maybe we, it would be better to wait for Oak Harbor sale in the spring. So, figure out.
Yes.
Just saying. Okay, anyone have any other questions for the director on this? Talk, let's talk, we'll make sure we put it on the, um, agenda next month.
Okay.
Please, we'll talk about it again.
I'm definitely in favor of keeping the, the trailer there as well.
I am too.
And I, I got a thought in the back of my head there with, if the city does rework the splash, or if the city does get the splash pad built there and if they do work, rework the lagoon to where that area brings in a lot more people, you know, maybe some agreements put back together like there used to be to where we have lifeguards there.
Mm-hmm. And. They won't know where to get them.
Exactly, and, and may, maybe that is a building that is needed down there in two years possibly.
Excellent, excellent point.
So, as a summertime structure, you know.
That's a good point.
Cause I know they're, they're moving that way, so in twenty eighteen we'll have to start thinking about.
But that, that has problems with our storage.
Yeah, I don't.
Well, but, but you know, then we, I can worry about that bridge as we start approaching it.
I don't think, it, it sounds like it's not worth, it, it's worth more to us in hand than it's, than the money that we could get for it, so.
At the moment, I would agree.
I would say retaining it is a good idea.
The, I will say this for the, the staff and I have no love and affection or any emotional connection to that trailer. It's the functionality it provides at the moment, because all of our archive records, financial and otherwise are in there, they're no longer out in the.
We're stretched for space and that space that we have, that we paid a pretty penny for at one time, as long as we know, let's not ever use it for office space, you know.
Don't worry, there's not enough room, well, I guess if I wanted to go out there, I could have a chair and this much desk space, but there's not really anywhere anyway.
Yeah, I would say you just don't ever have it as a single office space.
No, it won't be an office space unless absolutely needed.
All right, any other questions on property surplus? Okay, media policy, um, I just want to talk really quickly about answering emails again. You are right, we are not going to infringe on your First Amendment rights, so, um, when we get a group email to all the commissioners, whoever wants to answer it, go ahead and answer it. However, everyone, including the chairman, just needs to specify, I'm just one of five commissioners. I'm not speaking for the board. If we just say that, it's all good. And because the chairman is the one who has the responsibility to make sure somebody answers, if you go ahead and answer, if you're not the chairman, go ahead and in courtesy copy the chairman, so the chairman knows it's been answered, so that they don't have to send an answer. And also, if they use an answer, they don't contradict something or look stupid, that's all. Okay, does that work for you?
Very, very well, thank you.
Okay, that was, you were completely right, I, we don't want to keep anybody who wants to send an ice reply.
Thank you.
From doing that.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, any questions on, on media policy? Okay, now we're going to talk about N WAC Coach's Travel Fund. You were completely correct, Commissioner Fort, the agreement, the exact wording of the, um, the mode, the motion last year was that the money would pay into the travel fund and when that travel money was gone, it was, there was no more travel money. And they have overspent that this summer, you can tell by looking at it.
Yeah, twenty-seven fifty-eight, then they've taken in seventeen thirty-one.
Yes, so, the, um, director and I talked about that, and so what I asked him to do was, when we have our budget meeting next week, if that's okay to wait till then, he's going to come and tell us from projecting what the revenue is for the travel fund to the end of the year, expected expenses, is it going to be at least all paid for? If not, then what travel is going, not going to happen?
That's definitely right, well, we'll have to.
Does that work for you?
Yes.
Okay.
There's no travel between now and that time, there isn't.
I, they still.
Well, we start up the short course season in September.
But it's not long, it's not the long trips down to Seattle staying overnight, it's.
Yeah, they're only, so we, we, we had Bellingham, Anticortes, Marysville, Muckletio, and then, um, and I'm sure we will, because we've got good swimmers, then there are the champs, championship stuff that's down at, um, King County Aquatic in Federal Way. Those, the only King County would require overnight, the rest would be out and out, and out and ends on a day. But we are going, Joanne and I already started today looking at that and, um, we're, we're going to project, based on what the membership's going to look like, starting in September, what that fee's going to be, and then we're going to say, all right, Coach, you need to, this is, this is.
Sure the end of this year.
Yeah, yeah. And, and at some point, if, if we're not going to bring it in, then you gotta, you gotta prioritize which things are important to you and the, and the kids, or, or, you know, I, I say this and I'm not going to volunteer anyone for anything, I mean, it might, maybe it's he rides up with the family and it doesn't incur the cost with him, but, uh, but anyway, we're going to make sure that we, right now, my rough projections, I've got enough to cover what's, what we're over coming in, that will be coming in between now through December thirtieth, or, well, the first of December really, um, assuming we don't spend any more, and then maybe two, two of the upcoming day trips are.
Is there a way to recommend that this, that the swim team, the coach or whoever, keep some type of ledger so they know where they're at and if they're close to going over, how they got there?
Well, actually, Commissioner, that's, when I, when I look at the, this is where I went wrong. I'm looking at a four thousand dollar number on there and I'm going, okay, he's doing good, he's there, yeah, but there's not a whole lot of travel coming up. And, and it wasn't until, it was last week when I looked at the, as, with my staff were doing the Q two review and the mid-year revision, and I went, wait a minute, why are we so low on the amount that's come in?
That was, that was a hard one.
It was, it was based on a higher number than we have.
And that's, that's what it is.
It's based on forty-four individuals, but we also do families where this, you know, you don't have a day more than twelve. So really, reg, that calculus was off some, but the fact is that I didn't, I was looking at the wrong number, not looking at cross-referencing the number, so that's how we got.
That's a relatively new, uh, way of doing it, so we'll learn from it, okay?
But, we, I will at the, at the quarterly, at the Q two review, I will have that explanation of what the plan is to keep whole or get whole and not go into the hole.
Okay, that's all unfinished business. New business, audit review report.
Okay, um, each of you should have got, I'm sorry, did you have something? Looks like you're getting ready to start talking.
Oh, my, my main question is, why is this coming up now, because it's from twenty thirteen? I, I couldn't, I think.
Cause work's coming up for another review in December.
Okay, okay.
And, and you guys asked, uh, for review, for review status and, and I, I pushed it off last month because we were almost done and it just, I thought it'd make more sense to try and get it in.
Okay.
So, I'm not going to read the whole thing and hopefully each of you had a chance, but I'm going to summarize what you got in the, in the packet there. So Jo and I, Joanne and I reviewed the twenty thirteen accountability audit, we did not, this, we're not including the fraud audit in this, just the accountability audit. So, what they, and that covered a period from January of eleven through end of December of twelve. They evaluated internal controls and they performed a bunch of audit procedures on our activities here, mostly to determine whether we're complying with state laws and regulations and of course, our own policies that we have out there. They don't, they don't look at every transaction, they don't, or activity or area, they look at the things that are most high-risk for being abused or incorrectly done, or non-compliance or misappropriation can occur. So in that one, they looked at, uh, the N WAC, our financial condition, the running club, and dispersments and credit cards during that one there. And the results were, that they came out, in most areas, we comply with state laws, regulations, our own policies and procedures to do. They did note some certain error, certain matters that were not communicated, however, they did. they did note, they did communicate some things to the management at the time before their review. The main thing to take out of that audit was there were no findings. Findings are the bad thing. There were no findings in it. There were a lot of, there were some issues and some things that they, they put out to the commission as, that don't rise to the level of a finding, but they're things that they wanted us to work on. And that came as part of a management letter, one, and then also as part of their exit recommendations when they came into the exit review. The management letter was all about the credit, the dispersments and stuff. And what they came out of there with, and I will read these to you, they, to ensure dispersments are for allowable purposes and comply with district policy and adequate documentations maintained, we are doing that. To ensure all items purchased are received at the district, we're doing that. It means, means I can't have something shipped to my house.
Yes.
And then bring it here. So everything comes to us. Credit cards do not include a cash advance allowance, they do not.
Credit us.
And then ensure that contracts are in place with interim employees to establish, what, what happened there was whenever they hired the previous coach, prior to Coach Taylor, he was out of town. He lived out of town and came up, and they reimbursed him for stuff. But there was no employment contract with him, or no way to, it wasn't even an employment contract, but there was nothing in writing that said, here's how we're gonna re, we're gonna compensate you for what you do. I know, baffling as it is, there was nothing there. So we're not gonna make that mistake anytime that we have, which I don't foresee it happening, but if we ever have an employee that falls into that type of work relationship with us, we will make sure that there's something that's in writing, that's contractual, that specifies, we will, this is, this is how you're gonna be compensated for what you do for us. So there's no question in there.
Hmm.
That was the management letter. There were, there were four things in the exit recommendation. One was the annual filings weren't, hadn't been done for 2011, and we have basically till like 150 days, but until the end of May to do that. We're doing it now, and we are not delinquent on any past years. Joanne has caught us up, so we're good on that. The one on the aquatic club and the running club, I can almost dump into the same thing. There is no separate account anymore for anything. Everything now falls into one general district account. So, but back then, what they had, there was no oversight of these accounts, really, is what happened. And so there was no one there to, they could make adjustments, people could make adjustments, and that or the running club, it didn't matter. There was no one there as a second set of eyes to go, like an auditor, like I'm the audit officer, to go, okay, that, yeah, yeah, what, what about this? There was no, there was nothing like that happening. And that was the recommendation to, that we have a second person review adjustments. But now, we do that internally in the one big account, because that's all we are now, and there are no separate accounts for any programs, so those are done. They hit us on procurement, again, not hit, but there was a recommendation on procurement. Apparently, they, they did a roofing repair and a repair to the pool heating system, and they didn't have the intent to pay prevailing wages language in the contract. I actually, finally, after two weeks of trying to get a hold of them, got to talk to one of them three days ago up there.
One of the.
The auditors in the T. Bellingham, the cover-ups. And she sent me some R C Ws, two R C Ws, to make sure, really, all, if it's a public works thing, then, like, if we add on a fitness center over there on that side, or if we add on something here, well, we have to go through a bid process if it meets that threshold of money, and the contractor has to have these two things in there, the intent to pay prevailing wages, and then the affidavit of wages paid in there. But we already have a, and I didn't bring it out here, we already have a resolution that covers all this. The resolution just wasn't followed, I'm guessing. So, so I discussed it with them, they've sent me all the stuff. When we get to, I'm, I'm reviewing it now, but when we get to a point where this becomes applicable, I will make sure, and I will brief the board that, on what we're doing, especially on something like this, I will, I'm not just gonna, I've got this, it's in my threshold, and da-da-da-da, I'll make sure you guys know, so that someone's checking on me to make sure, I, because I missed something, I mean, I missed checking on free passes, so I could, I could miss any of that. So, does that answer that, that particular one for you guys adequately?
Yes.
Okay. And then the last one was the running club, was kind of the same thing. They had their own separate running account, and they allowed people in the, to enroll in the program that used punch passes from up here. I mean, they were just, it was, it was not being well-run. And so their recommendation was that the district ensure financial activities of athletic programs are adequately monitored, reconcile the district accounting records, and operate in compliance with district policies. It's all being done now because everything's now in one account, there are no, there are no checkbooks for programs out there, so.
My comment on that is, we had a program, a running program, that in 12.
Somewhere in there.
16 months earned $19,000. How did that happen, and we lost it?
They, I don't quite remember specifically, but took their ball and went their own way and started their own club.
Oh, that, there was, there was, I'm gonna leave names out of it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember the names.
Many over expenses?
There was a, there was a previous.
In revenue, so.
Yeah, yeah.
But you're right, maybe, but how tons of food.
They had a very productive club though, and they took their 50 people with them.
They did, and there was a, there was a, there was a dust-up with a swim coach, perhaps, in the acting director role, and it was, from what I understand, it wasn't pretty.
That's, it's too bad, because I would think the running club should be part of this district, and we should, but maybe.
I still see them running by all the time, too.
Okay. Well, maybe someday.
Anyway, that's the, that's what, that's the synopsis of the audit review where we are right now. So by all of the things that came in the recommendations, we are compliant. Now, that doesn't mean these are the things we're gonna look at, I'm waiting for them to tell me what they're gonna cover in this next audit.
And when is that gonna happen?
When are they gonna tell me, or when is the?
Do we know when it's supposed to happen?
The first week of December.
Okay.
We, we get to Billam in January.
Okay, yeah, right.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for the review on that, that was, that was very good. I do have one question, though. So we have, we have the accountability coming up in December. Something that's already scheduled with the Washington State Auditor. I know I recommended it at one point, have you, have you looked into the potential cost savings of using a private independent firm, you know, such as a Leverage or somebody to, to conduct that?
No one can, so there are two audits. There's the accountability audit, and then there's a financial audit. You can do it for financial audit, but if your revenue doesn't exceed 2 million.
Okay.
Then you don't, they don't do a financial audit. So that's how it applies to me, if we get to that level.
Perfect, I got you.
Good answer. Okay, any, you done?
No, yep.
No, no, never mind, we'll come, I guess.
This has something to do with the down in here, isn't it?
Yeah, M W R, yeah.
Okay. Is that, anyone else have any other questions? Okay. Would you make sure that those slides go to Commissioner Hock, or Commissioner Singleton, and your other one on?
It's in the package.
Oh, okay.
The slides are only my shorthand notes of what's in the package.
Oh, then never mind that.
But she did get a copy of the, of the package, so.
Okay, then never mind, okay. Um, audit. Okay, employee manual, everyone has that?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the folder that you had in front of you, and it's not labeled that way, but I'm just, it's in the.
I had a green folder, okay, it said something else.
We, this, it was just for handout only?
Yeah, yeah.
So my recommendation is going to be that we review it, and I know, Commissioner Hock, you are not gonna be here in October, but I, I hate to push it off. Sorry, September. I'm looking at October, that's why. But you're not gonna be here September, I hate to push it off for another month.
We had a special meeting in September as well, right?
I know, we, yeah. So it's kind of like, we have a special meeting, but that special meeting's already so chock-a-block with the budget and stuff, we can't.
A few things have moved around, can you run the September date by May again, please?
That, well, we're gonna talk about it later, but it's either the 7th or the 8th.
And I'll be here for that one, but the regular meeting, can you run that by May?
And the regular meeting is the 22nd. You're gonna be floating down a river?
I was gonna be, we already, we were lucky enough to spend eight days earlier this week there as well, so trying to see if we can figure it out.
Oh, so you're gonna be here for the September meeting, the regular one?
I think I can move some stuff around.
Okay.
Yeah. I'll have to leave a day and a half later that I was going to, but I'll, I'll make it work.
You sure?
We were able to stay away for a few more days than we planned this time, so.
All right. So the plan is, now that we have those, please read them. Mark them up, and we will review the handbooks at our next regular meeting. All right. Okay?
I'd like to ask, I'd like to ask this. When you come up there and you have questions on it, if you could compile them and send them to me, it'll make it go so much faster if I may, if I know ahead of time what your questions and issues are, I can address them, and then whether I address it adequately or not, we can discuss further, but it would really, it would save us some time and help us with that.
Okay, everyone then, review the handbook and get your questions, comments to the executive director, since the meeting is on the 22nd, if you get him to him, no later than the 16th. Is that enough time? Do you want a whole week?
That's Thursday, yeah.
The 15th would be Thursday.
Yeah, yeah, I think Friday, even, even by Monday, whatever that Monday is.
No, let's, let's say Friday, and then that way, because, you know, the way people are, they're aiming to Monday.
Friday before the, the regular meeting?
Yeah, Friday to the 16th.
Handbook, everyone, comments. Two. And if you, if you really don't like a paragraph, whatever, if you come with your suggested wording, that would be better, too, because then we can, you know, instead of having to try and reword it at the meeting, we'll have, you can say, I would like to replace this paragraph with this. That would be awesome. Everyone comments, too?
For, for what it's worth, on the record or off the record, whichever, 4.1, the working and core business hours, that is, that's how I expected that would look. So, good job there.
Awesome.
Yes.
Okay, E D. McCas on the 15th of September. Okay. Any other comments on the handbook? Okay.
Actually, if I might, Commissioner, you and Erica, there was a lot of work you guys put into, I don't know who else helped you, maybe, I don't know if Commissioner Singleton helped you at all with it, any of the review, but it really made my job easier, because I went through there and read through all the blood that was in there, and they read ink on the paper, and I really just incorporated everything, just, I can't think of anything I did not incorporate that you guys recommended in there. And then the only thing I have tweaked are a couple of the job descriptions. That's really all I had to do, so, I mean, you guys did a very thorough job on it.
Thank you.
That, that original one wasn't, that wasn't much of a baseline there either.
It, it had been so chopped up and over the years, and things added in, it weird plays, just weird.
Formatting the table of contents is gonna take me more time than any corrections that are made. How do you get that thing? I just haven't figured it out. I may have to redo it all from scratch.
Okay, M W R Price, and let me, I'm just gonna put on the table right now, we're entertaining no motions today on that, because it's very controversial, and I want the whole, I want a whole five-person board if we're gonna make drastic changes to how we do business. And I'm not saying I care one way or the other, either way, but I just, I don't want to have.
But back in January, it was said that, you know, you proposed we keep it as was, and because it was their new fiscal year didn't start till October 1, and so, so we need to get it done before October 1, so.
But I put it, I have put it on, we can talk about it at the September meeting.
And you can get it through, through to them, and they can get it approved for October?
Yes, I, I, well, I don't, I will call her and ask her that question, because I told her that I still have, you guys still have the final say on what happens, so, right now, since I've talked, I talked with her two weeks ago or whenever it was, I, I think anything we do, I, if I have an inkling of what I'm gonna do, or I can tell her, I won't be able to give you a number until after the 22nd of September for your planning purposes. So I'll, I'll find out what the deal is there.
I hope that, I hope that whatever, like, like Commissioner Holly said, it could be very controversial. I hope whatever we do, I assume we're negotiating with them in good faith, and not strong-arming them into anything that they're not willing to go along with.
Well, if we strong-arm too much, they'll just say, we're gonna build our own pool.
And even if, even if we're able to raise it, say, 15% or something, even if they're on board with that, I think we gotta be, have to be very cognizant of how, how that's reported in the paper.
Well, it's not even a random.
Just look at how people can look at it.
It's not a matter of raising it 15%, it was, what was brought up was, should they get the in or out of district rate? Is, that's what.
I'm leaning towards the in, you know, myself, but.
Well, they don't pay, they don't pay real estate taxes, it's a private company that owns all those housing. Even the county and the state are working on trying to say, say that they should be paying real estate taxes. So, in the meantime, I think it should be out of district. I think rate, and, you know, my proposal is about $4, it's 350 now, so it's about a 15% rate. And a court is charging far more than that. So I'm not strong-arming anybody, I just think we're raising all the rates reasonably, and everybody should raise a little bit of extra money, not just the taxpayers.
I was surprised to find out that we were, they were only paying 350 for the guys that come in and lap swimmers, like, no, they need to pay the in-district rate for lap swimming, and it's easy to tell.
They get the ton punch, they get the punch card rate.
Which is, anyway.
So I have some data here, it's data, do with it how you wish. At the time, in January, what we had proposed to them was a 10-card punch pass rate, and they were like, oh, no, wait, what, this is so, even though they knew a rate hike was coming, it was sort of like, okay. So in reality, and I look at, and I've given you data, the rate, that rate, the 10-card punch pass rate is higher than any open swim rate, and that, all they pay for is lap swim and open swim, they don't pay for anything else. And it's higher than PM lap swim, which is 350, which you talked about. The adult AM laps, so AM, AM lap swim is actually higher, if, if, so you came in and were gonna, and just paid cash to come swim in the morning, you pay $5, it would, and if you came 10 times, you'd pay 50 bucks. The punch cap, the punch card would bring you down to 425 per visit, right? And so that's what the punch card rate, in-district is 4250, out-of-district is 4750. The senior youth, so a senior or a youth AM lap swim punch card is $34, and out-of-district is $38. A six, so the single session AM for, you know, adult, basic adult, is $5. And senior or a youth, if, now, I guess, if I wasn't a retiree, as a, as a senior, I guess, when I were 55, I come in, I go, here's my, here's my $4 to swim up to 12.
So is M W R paying for a child to come swim in open swim, they're paying the lap swim price?
They pay 350, which is what they pay for lap swim.
Okay, that's, that's what we wanna know, is what they're, what they're reimbursing, and they're reimbursing it at a rate of 350. I think it should be up to 4.
For, for open swim?
For everybody.
But, but we don't chart, so hey, let me, let me finish this, and then we'll come back around, because there are a couple other numbers in here. PM lap swim is only 350. They reimburse us 350. When you come in, and you pay your 250, and they pay us the dollar, I get my 350 for Commissioner.
We'll talk about that when we talk about it, but I mean, the PM swim for Anacortes is only because it's only an hour swim. They have it from 12 to 1 only. We sort of cover PM from 12 to 2:30 and that's, that shouldn't be PM swim because if you got two and a half hours, that's longer. The reason they cut it down to, in Anacortes, was because it was limited to one hour and so they cut down the, the rate for that particular timeframe because it was a limited time that they could be in the pool. Whereas ours is not that way. Ours is two and a half hours or more.
Well, we have, we have six hours in the morning.
Well, but that's not considered PM.
Right. But, but we have a different rate.
But I'm just saying, the reason, so, so the, we, if we're going to use a PM rate for the afternoon swim, it should be from just 12 to 1. I mean, if, if we're going to have it longer than 12 to 1, then we don't have to have a PM swim because we're not like Anacortes. Theirs is limited from 12 to 1.
I know when I get in the pool, I don't know, I've never been that much of a swimmer in my life, but I like to play in the water. But when I get in the pool, I never want to be in it for more than an hour.
Yeah, but there are people who want to...
You get cold, you get cold.
And if it is somewhat atypical for normal years...
Okay, it's just one dude.
No, no, I'd say, not either, but there are people who spend an hour and a half.
Instead of pricing, please could you put a time limit on it?
I swim for an hour, man.
For one hour?
And...
And just expect that they police themselves in general?
I don't know the answer to that question without giving it more thought.
And I don't know the answer to it.
Yeah, but I will tell you this, in the 6 to 12 lap swim time, I don't have, I, I have all, I don't even know of a lap swimmer that comes in here outside of InWAC or, or the Masters who do it for an hour and 15 minutes. I don't know of a lap swimmer that lap swims more than an hour. Most of them are about 45 minutes. I really don't know of anyone that comes in and does it more than that. It's, it's pretty good exercise.
Well, I've seen more people. I've seen water walkers do it for a long time.
Water walkers aren't lap swimmers though, they're...
Well, they come in, they can use it during those hours.
Right.
And they do, and they do stay in for longer than an hour.
Some of them do. And aerobics people can back-to-back classes and be in there longer too. So, I'm, I'm talking about lap, lap swim. And right now, for this, other than the punch card for lap swim, there is no in or out of district rate if someone wants to come pay cash. It's one, it's $5, 350 for there. So, some other things about those houses over there, they were sold to contractors, but I didn't know this, civilians live in there too.
Yeah, exactly.
Retirees live out on Main River Point.
Yep.
So, I mean, I don't know, the problem, if we go this route, one of the, one of the challenges that I would see is, how do, I'm going to have to have someone else up there at certain times and especially for open swim, I'm going to have to have someone else up there to help. Otherwise, I'll have lines all the way out to the street, not just out to the corner. Because they're going to have to now check it and I don't even, how do I get a database of which addresses are what? Because if you're, if you're going to charge MWR more, but what about the, what if I...
I'm just talking about MWR. I'm not talking about the civilians out there. Civilians out there or the, or the retirees, if, if, if it's too much, if, if MWR then raises their rate, they can, they can pay the 10 punch card rate and have it on one of those little things.
But what if, what if I'm a Navy commander and I want to bring my kid here and I own a house in town? And now you're going to charge me an, and, and it doesn't matter, there are going to be people coming in here, we're charging them a rate that's not applicable to them. That's the, that's the...
But we're talking about MWR's reimbursement, not what the Navy commander's paying.
But a lot of people...
Please, I'm, I'm, I want to try one more time, because I don't know that, the Navy commander would come in and get reimbursed by MWR. But MWR is now, yeah, well, he's not, we would.
Yeah, exactly.
But, so, but now, we're charging MWR more for him because he's in district, because he's paying, he owns a house and is paying taxes. So, now, we're overcharging him for those people that actually own or rent a house. Do you, I mean, that's a fact.
But the vast majority who are active duty do not own houses. Most of them are either living on base housing or renting. And you're right, that they do pay.
I lived my entire life under the Navy umbrella, entire life, with the exception of three months between college and the Navy.
I'm saying the majority.
And I've never lived in base housing except for two years in Japan. Never.
But the majority now do not.
But, I mean, do you see my point? That, then, then I would be charging them for, I would be charging them for, I would be charging them for someone who owns or is renting a house that taxes are paid on, a rate that's higher than what they should be getting charged based on our rates.
My bottom line is, we're going to be raising rates on, on everybody, I would think, across the board. Include, you know, including the rates for the, the people paying real estate taxes are going to go up because the assessments are going up. So, and we, we got a new levy. So, I think it's only fair that they pay more.
Well, I, I, I understand where you're coming from.
I know, you know, we're trying to sell this to, we're trying to sell this levy to the taxpayers and we got to show them that we're being fair across the board, not just raising the rates on the taxpayers.
But, but you're not because now I'm charging the Navy more for a person who's paying taxes, they're paying the same, they're, they're reimbursing us as if that person wasn't paying taxes. So, how do you distinguish between them?
They just, they just pay the 10 punch card rate. They don't have to pay because...
Look, I don't know how to explain it any better than that. We're, we'd be overcharging, we'd be defrauding the government.
So, let's charge everybody nothing and just, that would make things easier. We'd have lots of people here and, you know...
Yeah, but I would take that seriously, Commissioner, if I thought you were serious.
Okay.
I'm not serious.
I have plenty more to add on it. I'm worried about, I'm, I'm worried than that all along. I, I don't support any increases at this point in time on, on any matters. You know, I think we need to proceed to the next year where we're at and...
We keep doing that year after year.
If I may, we, we, the price of the, the general admission price was reviewed a year ago.
Yes.
And they'd be up for review next year. Now, as far as MWR goes here, I, I, this is where I think I could, I, well, my input would be if I was an Arco. Whether I agree with you guys or not, I'll do whatever I'm told to do. The morning, if, if we can separate out morning from afternoon and perhaps we can get them to either pay the full five or get them to pay the punch card for the morning people that come in.
I'd say you're thinking about five.
Well, I, I'm just throwing something out there, Commissioner. I'm just saying, if we want to get them, they're paying full price for the ones in the, after 12 o'clock for open and lap swim. There are, there is no...
They're paying punch card rate, that's a discounted rate.
No, they're not. They're paying the, they're paying the, they're paying the MSRP.
I thought they were paying, it was based on the 10 punch card rate.
Nope, the 10 punch card rate is, the 10 punch card rate is higher than our, our MSRP.
What's MSRP?
Our, I'm using that as, it's the sticker price, which is $3.50 for PM lap swim and open swim.
And when are they paying more for that?
They're not...
When are they, well, you just said they were.
If, if you charge them the punch card rate, they would be.
Well, they, isn't that the 350 based on the punch card rate?
No, the punch card rate would be 425.
Oh.
So, they're paying, we'd be charging them more than the general admission.
Well, I'm just saying, let's pay them, charge them the punch card rate, is all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. Not, not more, the same rate as the punch card rate.
But you want, you want them to be out of district rate?
Well, even if we're not even paying, let's just, yeah, I think it should be out of district because they, but, so, let's say, let's not say out of district, let's just say, charge the in-district 10 punch card rate.
So, are we going to raise the, all of open swim and all of PM lap swim to...
For MWR reimbursement, not for all that. We're just, we're talking about MWR reimbursement.
Okay.
We're not talking about taking money from the Navy. We're not talking, MWR is saving millions of dollars by not building their own pool and operating their own pool. They pay considerably more to Anacortes for their people to go over there and swim. And, you know, why, we're, we're not asking, asking for their Anacortes rate. I'm just asking for a, a fair rate. We talked back in January that we would address this and raise the rate at this time of the year. That's what I'm asking you to do. That's why I agreed back in January. Yeah, it was in the middle of the fiscal year, we shouldn't be changing it. Let's not change it then. But I think we should change it for the new fiscal year based on the punch card rate.
So...
And it can be in, we can discuss whether it's in district or out of district. I'll, I'll go on with in-district if that's what everybody wants, but I think it should be increased to the 10 punch card rate for the in-district at least.
So, then...
I have, I have one thought on the difference in, between us and Anacortes as well. I, I, I think here, you know, with the way the MNO levy works, et cetera, I think, I think here in Oak Harbor, we're, we're reaping the benefit more of the Navy being here than Anacortes.
They have, they have plenty of people over there who are Navy people who are living over there.
I get that.
And, and they basically have, instead of having a Navy base which doesn't pay real estate taxes, they have a refinery which does pay real estate taxes. So, I don't know that we, we're, we're, and I'm retired military, I don't know that we're reaping that much benefit compared to Anacortes or, or Coopville.
I feel like there's a substantial number of homes that are owned within our district by military people.
I retired military.
There's businesses.
I know a ton of enlisted...
There are businesses.
Homeowners as well that pay, that pay, that pay the MNO levy. So, I, I would hate to feel like we were charging people twice. You know, when I go to...
And there are businesses in Anacortes?
When I go to the hospital down the road, for instance, out of way, not Anacortes, out of way, I feel like I'm paying twice. You know?
Why?
And it makes me want to drive to Anacortes because I, I pay for all their stinking levies and then I got to pay...
What's the difference, what you're paying, it's the same thing here, same thing with us?
My, my thought, when I go to the hospital is, if somebody from California breaks a leg and they go there, they get the same rate I get. But I, I pay for that thing to be there.
Somebody from California comes here and pays the daily rate, they get the same rate as everybody else does.
And that's what I don't get because I, I pay, I pay for the hospital levy and I don't understand why I don't get an in-district rate.
Yes.
Well, I'm just saying, we, they don't have to pay an in-district rate if they come here from California and, and swim and pay to swim unless they're buying a punch card. If they pay a daily rate, they pay the same rate as you and I.
Correct.
He just said that. That's not any different than the hospital.
We love the Navy and we are supporting the Navy.
I think it is for...
And I agree. I'm not going to support the Navy. I just think the Navy, we do not need the gift, NWR. They, they are wealthy enough and they are earning enough from, from, from our shopping and they're supposed to spend some of that money back in the community. Well, if they're not spending it because they don't build their own lap pool, this is the only, this is the only base in the nation that, problem that I know of, Navy base that doesn't have its own lap pool.
I just don't want to feel like we're...
Then, then, so if they can save that money, they can give us the district a little bit of that money because we need it. If they want us to keep open, they shouldn't try to encourage us to stay open. And I, I don't think that if we, if we address it that way, they're going to fight it. I think they'll accept it, especially knowing that they're paying more to Anacortes.
Okay, um, I want to move on, but what I'll do is, the program review committee will meet.
Okay.
And if we, if we decide this issue on the 22nd of September, is that soon enough to make a difference in your...
I will find that answer out.
Okay. If not, then we're going to have to talk about it on the 7th or 8th of September, but in which case, I'm kind of like, the program review committee won't be able to meet before that.
I'll find, I'll do my best to find out in time to get the agenda out legally so that it's covered up and I'll let you know.
Okay. So, the program review committee will meet, we will talk about your stuff.
Okay.
And, and I think I can, I can successfully make your points and we will come with a recommendation.
Okay.
And then we will vote on that and discuss and vote on it either the meeting of the 22nd or a little earlier if we have to. Does that work for you?
Acceptable.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you for bringing it up because you are right. We did talk about that we needed to make a change and somehow time was passing and we were not going to make an effective change. So, thank you for bringing it back up. All right. Steph, oops, sorry.
One other question. I don't know if this belongs in the new business or not. So, the Scuba Company that rents the pool here is a private for-profit company. We can't gift and so they should be charged the full rate of their costs of using the, the time they use the pool.
And, yes, you're absolutely right about that. And that is one of the discussions I'm having with the aquatics director now is, what is the agreement then? Because I don't have a contract. All I have is a, all I have is they come in here and they do pay money. We've already gotten some money from them.
Really? Has, I haven't seen anything on the, that's what I was kind of wondering about.
Yeah, I know, and that's what I didn't either, but they have given us, I think, $600 or something.
Okay, all right.
And, and so, but I need to talk, I need to find out what the agreement is and then that needs to become a contract and then they need to be charged for the space and they come in here and we usually keep a lifeguard in here with them at night.
Yeah, exactly, so...
We do.
If we don't, maybe you just should let your mind grow big and think about what you want from them.
I already, I already know what they use, I already know what I need.
If you want, if they just pay their costs.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, that, that's in work. I'm hoping that I'll have that from her before, well, because I'm, I'm concerned too when I look at the, the P and L and I go, there's a couple brands that I haven't seen a set of yet.
Right.
And if, okay, if I know I'm going to get it in November, then I'm, then I can rest, I could, at least on that line, I can, I can rest.
Does anyone, we've got staff reports to go through. Does anyone need to take a break or should we push on? Okay, we're pushing on. Staff reports. Okay, Skagit Valley College, you met with Dr. Kalu.
Kalu.
Kalu, cool name. Are we charging them the same, more? What kind of contract did you work out with them?
The price, the price went up, um, on the kayak class, it went up about $156 and it went up about $120 plus or minus a few bucks for the swim class. The, so, we, we're, we've got a contract going back and forth right now. The, the issue is, I know what we need to charge because I have, each, each individual class has one lane, one instructor, and then the pro-rated lifeguards and the person up front.
Right.
And, and the lane, and so, I've got all that, that's all in the calculus of the thing. And just for the record, since it's public, one class, they do three simultaneous, they put one class is $636 is what we charge them.
And how, so that's one lane for how many, one day a week?
That's for two nights a week for an hour, so it's...
Two nights for an hour in one lane?
For six weeks. That's 12 weeks, yes.
12 of 12, 12 lane hours.
12, 12 lane hours, correct.
Okay. And you're getting how much?
$636. And that includes the instructor.
So, that, yeah, so that should cover the...
Oh, yeah, and one, it covers our cost for that.
Right, yeah.
And, and so, so that's not the issue. The issue is their calculus on what determines whether they can fill a class and their calculus, they charge, so that's a PE class, so it's a, it's one credit, so it's $100 and then a $10 pool fee that they charge the students. By my calculations, that means that they have six people in a class, they can run a class, it doesn't matter to me, they can come with one person, I'm charging them the same. They can come with one or eight, which I cap it at eight.
Well, then that's their decision. That's a budget decision they have to make whether they give their class or not.
Right. And that, but see, what I'm going with that is, that's the hard part about budgeting that because I won't know some, I won't know, I don't have to know until five days prior to the class start whether or not they do the class and I have budgeted X amount of money to come from Skagit Valley. So, we're trying to figure out, Pete and I are trying to figure out, how do we help them market this better? are trying to figure out, how do we help them market this better?
So, we gotta charge a little, we have to charge them a little extra to cover the no-show times then?
I don't think I can. Because if they give me a notice, then I can re-put this-
No, but I'm saying, you've already budged, you've already got the time, you've already got the time set aside for them. Well, I guess you just open it up at the late.
It's, well, it's a seasonal time. I can either re-put this for aerobics or something or I can go lap swim.
Yeah, okay.
And actually, I would need to because if I have all three keys-
I'm not the only one who comes here and swims. I check them out real closely. I know when there's special times.
Yes, sir.
Looking at this executive director's report, I see, you know, the Dog Park volunteers, Skagit Valley College, MWR, Northwoodby Little League, Oak Harbor High School. You know, and with all that, I see, I see an executive director and a district, if you will, that is building or rebuilding relationships. And I think that's very important to our continued success. And to see that you're speaking at the Kiawanas Club, that's pretty cool. I don't know much about them. I know my son's got a few awards from them at school and he thinks it's really special. So, they must be a good group.
I don't do breakfast typically and this is seven o'clock.
I was gonna ask, do you need a commissioner to go with you? My dad was a Kiawanian for a lot of years.
I'll ask him if I can bring a commissioner.
Awesome. And then the only other thing I have to add there, the pool shutdown here coming up. I know sometimes deadlines look like you have enough time in there and things tighten up. If for some reason you guys need a hand meeting that deadline, I don't have no problem volunteering my time at the ML and I and whatever else. Sign an old harmless, if you will. So, don't be afraid to call if you guys do need a hand or something.
So, what the base plan is, I mean, as no plan survives first contact with the enemy anyway. Tomorrow night at 2,200, the pool starts draining. The first thing that happens is all the tiles get caulked and then we've already got it all ready to go. And it's about a five-day cure anyway. So, it'll happen while the pool's out, while the water's out, pool's dry. I won't have to worry about water lapping into it and stuff like that. We'll be doing a lot of pressure washing, the deck and everything, then restinceling and repainting some stuff, and pressure washing outside, fixing lights. Barrett will be in doing their stuff on the heater, so it'll all be shut down. And I'll talk to Matt about turning the heat off in the morning and maybe see if that won't help us. By the end of the day, it won't matter. It might be down to 81 or 80 degrees and at nighttime, it's open swim anyway. The kids will love it. But the plan here is, I've got all the slots filled by the eager staff that wants to earn more money.
Okay.
Good.
And this comes out of the shutdown $3,500 budget out of there. And if it goes right, I won't even execute all of that. Most of the supplies have been bought already that were at the cleaning stuff and the things we need to do. The plan is to go nine o'clock to five o'clock every day. Matt and I might do longer stuff and all. Matt, because Matt's just an early bird. He'll probably come in and start working at five o'clock or something. I don't know. But that's the plan, is to do nine to five, four-hour shifts, two four-hour shifts because not every lifeguard or front desk person can work an eight-hour day. And they're probably not gonna want to once they realize what they're, when they're pushing auriatic acid or whatever. Even with the respirator, they're probably not gonna, oh, this isn't so much fun. But if we, our plan is, we should be done by Friday with everything. And we have two weekend days as backup in case we don't. And so, that's the plan.
I have one thing to add to that, real quick if I can, really quick. One recommendation there, you know, with people working out of staff sometime, or people working out of class sometimes, if you will, like you have to with a small staff like this, you know, maybe to have a safety meeting every morning or then to every shift or injuries if there are any are reported. Just because you mentioned the moratic acid.
That's a great idea.
That's a, that's a good idea. At least in operations, meeting-
At work, anytime we have to do a meth remediation, we go ahead and have a safety meeting every morning.
Do a what? What did you call it?
Meth remediation where people decide to light up stuff in their apartment.
These auriatic gases, I assume you have goggles and-
So, anytime we get to where we're kinda working out of class, we have a safety meeting every morning to where nobody says, oh, I got moratic acid in my eyes or something, you know?
Yeah, it wasn't that fun.
Yeah, I think the moratic acid's gonna be the older word. I'm not gonna put my 15-year-old lifeguard in there. It's gonna be, we have a couple of the days where we have the cleaning crew at night. But this is their, kinda like their vacation time too. You can get a vacation here.
That moratic acid is pretty impressive. You can take three or four balls of tinfoil and put it in that empty water bottle there, a little bit of moratic acid, put the lid on.
That's why you don't get any complaints from patrons.
Absolutely.
So, I had two items with the, the pool shower's been broken again for three weeks. Did you know that?
Uh-uh.
Some nice person decided to turn the handle to parts. I mean, you know, that had to be done almost intentionally, I think. I can't believe it.
I'm gonna hope for stupidity, but I'll-
Okay, yeah, I would, either way.
Take David, blank, couple of cases.
And then, yeah, stupidity, AKA the swimmers in Rio. But anyway, the pool shower's broken for the last three weeks. Is that gonna be repaired during the?
If the parts come in from Scotty's, Scotty's doing. And I talked to Matt about, you know, we had our discussion for today.
Right, about push buttons. So, you know, make it idiot-proof.
Well, since we already ordered the parts and they're gonna bill us for the parts.
Yeah.
We're gonna go with it this time the way it is. If it happens again, then Matt says, yeah, let's go to something like that. So, we, you know, so who knows? Maybe we'll get six weeks out of this next one.
Oh, jeez, oh man.
I don't, I don't know. But yes, he's on board with that of moving to a push button type of scenario.
And then I talked to you about the base of the lifeguard stand out there being blasted and then water painted.
Take off, yeah, it was grayed down.
Yeah, because it's very rusted down there.
Prime it and then repaint it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And in fact, there are a lot of things that are similar to that around the pool that-
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, we're under the maintenance report here now? Is that-
Not yet.
Okay.
Well, we're priming it to you guys, your guys.
We're trying to pull shutdown. Are you doing anything in the locker rooms besides fixing the showers if the parts come in?
The showers are fixed.
Okay. I was just wondering if you're gonna clean or-
Oh, no, yeah, they're gonna do a deep clean tomorrow night. That's the first thing that happens as the water's going down. The cleaning crew comes and they do their usual, come in at night, and then they're gonna do a super clean there. Yes, sir.
Can we adjust the men's shower anyway, at least? There's like, there's one shower that everybody knows, kind of stays on for like 30 or 40 seconds. The rest all stay on for a lot less time. So, everybody tries to use this one shower. Can we just sort of have a uniform that they all stay on for 30 seconds or whatever and not have one just come on for spritz and the other one come on for 10 seconds and another one come on for 40 seconds? So, I'll set them all to something reasonable and have them all the same.
So, I hesitate to say it this way, but the short answer is no. But here's why. The showers have five settings. When Matt put them in there, he explained it to me. They have five settings, two, five, seven, 10.
Seconds?
And seconds. And then dealer's choice. We don't know what that is. It's not labeled what it is. And that, it could go for three minutes, which isn't what we want because we're trying to control cost.
Well, then send them all for 10 seconds.
They're all set for 10 seconds.
Except for one.
No, they're all set. It's whether or not, it could be the bladder. So, I will see if Matt can look at them. But they're all set for 10 seconds. Every one across both locker rooms are set for 10 seconds.
Really? Okay.
They are set.
I can guarantee you, there's a couple of them that are different.
I wonder if the one that's running for 30 seconds, if you could set it to seven and maybe it would run for seven then possibly or closer to 10.
I don't know. That might be worth trying something to see if it, I hear it every morning from the ladies.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Every morning. And then one lady one time, I'll share this little anecdote. Do you know what it's like to have to hold a shower head while you take a shower? And I've spent over three and a half years combined on aircraft carrier. Why am I not in the Navy?
I agree.
Yeah.
Now, you probably had all kinds of tricks to keep that thing running though.
And again, if they're all the same, then it's all the same.
They're all, they're all set to 10 seconds.
Okay.
But I'll ask Matt, let's try one, let's switch one to seven seconds and see what it does. And maybe it's, it might be as simple as just taking it apart, resetting it, and maybe it lasts for a week again. I don't know. We'll try something.
And then, oh, never mind. I'll wait till we get the public records request or get to the diff that area.
The Oak Harbor Swim Team contract is signed and you said they may reduce hours. Is that gonna do anything to our revenue? It doesn't, does it?
Well-
Because they pay by the month, I thought.
The revenue's not what, that revenue has to be adjusted anyway.
Okay.
Because I didn't understand how the, we got all the revenue for them for the 15-16 season in '15. So, that 5,000 number's coming down. What they'll pay now is $860 something dollars a month. So, September, October, November, December. They're not canceling any hours in the morning. They got a coach.
Okay, right.
So, they're good to go. So, we're not gonna lose any hours from them. It's just that the number now will probably, since we bill them at the end of the month, it depends on how I, I don't think I can recognize December's when it arrives in January as December money.
Correct.
But so, I'll have to adjust that number down to three months of-
Right.
Which isn't good, actually.
Was the coach they hired already an employee of the school's?
Yeah, it's Ginny Butler, who's one of the guidance counselors that we're putting in.
It's just in the paper, yeah.
You know her?
Yeah, she names, I'm very familiar. Ally went to school there for a while.
So, she teaches at the middle school, but she's gonna be the high school?
She's a counselor. But she was a collegiate and a high school-
I saw, they did her in the paper, but I didn't, I didn't see where it said where she worked.
Holy, wow, that's awesome. Yeah, she's been in here. We put her through the, we had to get her certified because I don't have lifeguards on deck when they're out there alone. Because they're out there typically when coaches out there with NWAQ anyway. But, so I don't have lifeguards out there. I mean, there's a lifeguard on duty because I have to have a lifeguard in here. But, so she's all certified now. She's done all of her stuff. She's got all her WIHA certs for water safety and first aid and CPR. And so, she's good to go.
Anyone have anything on Coach Taylor, NWAQ or Aquatics?
Admin corner. Admin corner. Are we allowed to know what the public records request was for?
Yes. We get one from this company. It's, oh, God. Commissioner, I'm sorry.
Are they in Florida?
I don't know. They, it's every quarter we get this request from. And it's, it can be answered in, it's basically an electronic file and it's answered in like three minutes.
Yeah.
It's really, I don't-
What is it for? Is this like, is this like a for-profit company?
We get quite a few from for-profit companies looking to know what we buy so they can know what the quality sells us.
What are we buying? Yeah, what are we buying?
And so, yeah, I have a problem with that. So, public, I thought it was sort of like a quest from our local public and it was going on, not for some company to make, for-profit company to make more profit. That's kinda belonging.
Company in Florida, our contractor tells us, yes, you gotta keep selling them.
You do. Unfortunately, you can't, you can't.
But it takes, at the most, it takes five minutes for Julie to put it together and send it. Because it's just a canned request every quarter. So, it's-
Okay, yeah. So, anyway, in the future, could we just learn, know if there's something, just sort of say what the request was for?
Do you want it for that one too?
Yeah, could.
Okay.
Yeah, just, I mean, just so we know what the-
Yeah, I had that question too. Because it is interesting to know what people-
I think East D Supply might be behind it, but they won't tell me.
And on the facilities list, we asked last month to start putting dates in it. So, I want you to sit down with Matt and go down and start, you know, like the sauna is still listed as number one, sauna fix. So, that can actually probably go off the list if there's nothing that needs to be-
Well, no, I leave it on there so you know that it was fixed since the last time. It will go off the next time. You are correct.
Okay. But again, we want, we want, start putting dates. How old are the, the roof is, you know, the original roof, but it was, now we found out it was fixed in 2014. I don't remember that.
I don't either. 2013.
Twenty, no, 14. You said 2014. August of 2014, which is right before I came on the board. And it's like, I don't remember that ever being discussed.
Just this one, I think. The leak was over here then.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Anyway.
I didn't know it either.
I think the leak was the flat roof. Maybe it was flat roof over the hot tub, but I think it was over the little-
No, it's still leaking over the hot tub.
Okay, it was over the little pole.
But it's, you know, this list is, it's critical maintenance. Like, this is critical. And it's like, there was, the reason we came up with this list was because we had a bunch of old, old stuff that's gonna fail. And we need to start trying to take care of it and replace it before it fails.
Critical maintenance and plant oscillations.
I had an idea on the roof as well. Just an idea or a suggestion. It says here, anyway, I can't find it right this second. I think I made some reading glasses today, maybe had a headache.
So, you wanna read it or whatever I said on the roof?
I might get the verbiage wrong, but the roofer thought that maybe this roof was never intended to be replaced.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's what he said.
I don't know if you remember back to like 2007, I think it was, when the NFL took over temporary ownership of the Superdome. And they rebuilt that thing for the Saints. And then the Saints took ownership back over here later or something. They sprayed that entire roof in some type of foam material and then like rubberized the top of it. And they said the roof would last 100 years. And they just got up there and sprayed it on there with a gun. Something like that, maybe, possibly.
You are right. That is one of the things that we've talked about there. And you could, there's these spray sealants.
Yes.
Yeah, that's one of the things. Because when I was up there on the roof, I mean, this is really, really thick aluminum sheeting up there. And I could see, I kept wondering that myself, whether, you know, that could be replaced or some sort of ceiling would be better.
It seems like maybe it's structurally enough.
It's around the edges of the aluminum sheets that it's, that it's leaking, not the aluminum sheets themselves.
Right. Is there maybe, I know we've been dealing with local contractors and usually that's a very good thing, I believe. I wonder if there's not some type of commercial company that maybe we'd have to pay for a bid or something.
Well, these, executive director McCaslin's philosophy, having been in business development and sales and all that, bidding is the cost of doing business. I do not want to pay someone to come give me a bid on anything. I'll automatically disqualify them. I would spend, you'll be sick. We spend, to win a bid, we would spend, before the RFP even came out, we would probably spend easily $125 to $180, $200,000 on pre-bid activities.
Wow.
Just to get, just to bid for something. So, when these guys want to charge me travel and all to come up for a day to look at the roof and do it, I'm not interested.
I'm not interested.
To the other side of your, to the other side of your query or statement there, Matt has gone all the way down to Everett and up to Bellingham and to Skagit County to try to find roofers. This is the only guy who has, well, two responded. He's the only one that stayed with us.
Yeah.
So, you mentioned an RFP there. What about like a request for qualifications or something then on somebody, just to bring them in on like a-
An RFQ?
Like to bring an architect or somebody in on a consultation basis real quick or something, maybe?
I don't have money for that this year.
No, I understand that. It might be a while.
Are we looking into to do the ceiling as opposed to-
Yes, that's, whatever.
Let's, I'm like that.
So, yeah, I mean, and if that's a cheaper thing, then I'll put a bid out for it. Well, it depends on when he gets, if he gives me an estimate that's under what I have to bid publicly for, then I don't have to worry about it. But I assume it's probably gonna be more than, you know, 700, 7,500, whatever the number is that I can use.
Flat roofs are always a problem.
What's that?
Flat roofs are always a problem.
But once we know, if he, if this guy's right and this roof was never intended to be replaced, then our only option is to seal it.
Yeah.
It's really the only option. Now, the problem with that is what's going on under it when you seal it. And I don't know how we'll ever find that out unless we go up through the bottom. But you're the, you're the maintenance guy in that aspect, so I'm just, yeah.
Just hope we're catching it quick enough and-
That's what I was hoping, yeah.
Well, it's been a couple of dry years. That's good. But, all right.
Well, it's when we get, it's when we get the blowing rain that the leaks come in.
That's right. Because they don't sit flat, they're not tight. They're kind of sitting up like this, some of them, so and so forth.
Okay. Any other comments on staff reports? Thank you for a very complete report. And I will now read the employee of the month nomination. Mr. Tyler Schell. Northwoodby Park and Recreation District would like to recognize Tyler Schell for an outstanding performance on and off shift. He has proven that he is a dedicated employee and cares for the safety of all patrons and staff. He has great attention to detail and conscientious, Tyler is always lending a helping hand, especially when it comes to accommodating patrons, schedule changes, and adjustments. Tyler has a great attitude, professional appearance, and demonstrates on a daily basis what Northwoodby Park and Recreation District is all about. Thank you, Tyler, for your reliability, respectfulness, and intense effort. Okay, well done.
He filled in for Jessica the two weeks, like, while she was gone, which, you know, scheduled before we knew she was gonna need to take the job. And he walked in on day one into a furball. It was just not even, but he recovered like within 30 seconds and then just about making it all back. It was first day of swim lessons.
Okay.
Never a fun day around here.
Final board comments? Commissioner Ford?
None.
Commissioner Hoplar?
No, I think the meeting went really well and I hope they can continue to go so well.
Thank you. Next meeting, we'll be, okay, we had to decide this. Did you guys see the email? Commissioner Singleton cannot meet on the 8th. She asked if we could move the meeting to September, Wednesday, September 7th.
The date before, yes.
That one works for me. Does it work for you too?
Yes.
And Mr. McCaslin said it doesn't work as well for him, but he'll make it work. So-
I won't have Joanne here. Joanne needs to be at these meetings.
Well, that was the whole reason, yeah.
But that's okay. That's all right. I will do my best. Whatever I can't answer, I will get back with. But Joanne just has a lot more in-depth knowledge than I do.
Yeah. So, what, basically, any questions that we have, he'll write down and we'll get the answers at either the next meeting or-
Those I can, yes, sir.
Yeah.
I'll try to get everything I can.
So, the next meeting will be on Wednesday, September 7th, the special meeting at 1800,